Yes, we're ready.
Okay, let's call a meeting order with roll call, please.
Joe Meyer?
Here.
Key Sling?
Here.
Frank Hammer?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Reich?
Here.
Okay, we will start with citizens input. Council, with your indulgence, I would ask that we take citizens input on the roundabout when that agenda item comes up, if that's okay. We talked over staff, we'd like to give some background before we take input. So if that's okay, and someone just gave me a nod, we'll take citizens input at that point for item, agenda item B, when the time comes.
Yeah, that's okay, Jim.
Okay, sounds good. If that's, that being said, then at this point, we'll take citizens input. Anyone wants to address the council? Just come forward, state your name and address for the record. If you're here to speak for item A, which is the fence in the sewer easement, or item B, the roundabout, we will take your input later in the meeting for that. So we'll start with anyone in the council first, and then if anybody on Zoom wants to address the council, at this point, we'll just, we'll call you out, and you can unmute yourself then.
Re-iterate, we'll take citizen input on the roundabout at later point in the meeting, okay? Okay.
Okay. Anyone that's remote on Zoom that would like to address the council on anything not related to the roundabout? You can unmute yourself now. Okay. I see no citizens input not related to those two items. The first agenda item, that would be the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve or anything held for separate discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
A motion by Bob, second by Karen. Call roll, please.
Key Sling?
Aye.
Frank Hammer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Reich?
Aye.
Key Sling? I'm Joe Meyer.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Reminder, everyone use their microphones, please. All right, so the first new business item will be Brooke Payton, fifty-six fifteen Sunset Drive. A fence located in the sanitary sewer utilitiesment. Brooke, if you'd like to address the council, please come forward to the podium.
Is this, this is on? I don't need to push anything?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Hi, my name's Brooke Payton. I reside at fifty-six fifteen Sunset Drive, and I'm here in regards to the Autumn Drive Sewer Replacement Project. We were notified in early October about the project and walked the site with the engineers. We were also informed at that time that anything needed to be removed out of the easement area, and we were shown where that easement area was, and that that would be at the cost of the residents. Last year, when I purchased my home, I looked to install a fence, a wooden fence to contain my two large dogs. I did call City Hall to find out what the process was to put that fence in, and they directed me to the website where I read through the regulations and what was required of me as the property owner. I then had to obtain permission from my neighbors as well because of where the property lines were and where I should and should not place the fence. And after gathering all that information, I did come into City Hall and sit down with the representative here. They provided me with a plot map where we reviewed all the regulations, what type of materials I was using. I provided them with all of my neighbor's permission as far as where to put the fence. They validated and confirmed where my property line was, and then ultimately gave me the permit for the fence. No time during that conversation or any other conver- always I made aware of an easement. My concern about this is that I had no prior knowledge of this easement. And when obtaining the permit, I came to City Hall to confirm where I could place that fence. If I had known about the easement, I would have reconsidered the location of that fence. Knowing that this project was only a year away, there is no way that I would have wanted to spend the extra money to then move that fence. So since I did not have any proper documentation or knowledge of the property lines, I was looking for City Hall to provide that to me. It was failed to be disclosed to me so that I did not ultimately put the fence where I would now not have to move that fence at my own cost. I understand, based off of what's written in the agenda, that there are other property owners that do have that responsibility of moving items out of that easement area. And those items do consist of, you know, furniture, wood sheds, gardens, landscaping. These are not permanent items. When I came to City Hall, it was for a permit, for a permanent structure, and I was unaware of easement, and it was not disclosed to me. So although as the property owner, I did my due diligence in obtaining all the correct documentation and understanding where and where I could not place that fence, I am now being left with the responsibility and the cost to move that. At this time, I don't have the means to do that. I'm a single mom working two jobs. I don't have the tools to go down and move the fence myself. Hiring a contractor would also put me in a financial hardship to try and move that. I did talk to my contractor, they conducted the surveying, they did call Iowa One Dot. I have all the documentation, the documentation that I obtained from your office, including a actual plot map that was drawn on by one of your representatives here at City Hall indicating where I could and could not put that fence. And the easement is not noted on this. So if I don't know it's there, and your, and your organization, City Hall, tells me, here's a permit, this is where you can build, and they don't tell me it's there, I have no idea that I can't build there. So this fence was put in a year ago, which I believe is in a timeline that this project was known about. And I, again, would not have knowingly built a fence within an easement that I would have to remove a year later. So my request is to ask the city council to take some responsibility for not disclosing that information and including the cost of moving my fence in with this project.
Okay, thank you. Counsel questions for Ms. Payton?
I did provide copies of everything to Beth. It was attached to the agenda as well. So if, again, if there's anything that you need me to provide, I have copies of everything signed and dated by your office.
Brooke, just a quick question.
Yeah.
When you purchased your property, they would have given you the plat, or the realtor would have gone over the plat of the property? That easement should have been listed on that plat, I believe. Because I know, I went back and looked at mine, and I have an easement across my back property as well, and it's listed on mine, so, and I've been out here for forty years, so.
Yeah, and I, my realtor did not go over that with me, and I was trying to find that documentation, and I couldn't find it, which is why I came to City Hall to get a permit and to see where I could build. So I guess my question to you would be is, if somebody doesn't know, and they don't have that documentation, and they come to City Hall for a permit, is that not something that would be disclosed to them?
Brooke, were you issued a permit?
Yes.
Beth, is that on the permit stating about the property lines?
For the permit, they got a site plan, and that's evidently what was provided to Brooke, drawn up probably by Doug, the site plan of the property. Probably what Doug wasn't aware of, as well as what Payton wasn't aware of, is there was an easement into the, in the back of the property. But you can, you know, go on the assessor website to, you know, get the approximate, you know, dimensions of your property and things like that.
Beth, is that easement strictly for the city sewer, or any other public utilities, or any other utilities, I should say, using that easement that crosses her property?
I'm not, Nate, is there electric and gas back there, or is it just the sanitary sewer?
There's a, and also general utility easements as well.
And those were all cleared through the contractor, through the One Dot, and I had provided that documentation as well. So they did, they did check the locating on all the utilities down there.
Brooke, how much, I mean, you're asking for council to approve some type of financial assistance. Do you have an idea what it's going to cost to relocate either permanently and keep it out of easement, or to temporarily, temporary move and then replace, if you so desire, what you shouldn't do? But I mean, either way, what are you looking for? What are you asking for, council?
Well, I did reach out to my contractor, Hire, who installed the fence. And right now, I asked them to provide a quote, and it's just going to be based off of feet. The initial cost of the fence was almost eight thousand dollars. So for the back side of the fence and ten feet up each side, I would assume would be under a thousand. I'm not sure, because they didn't give me a full quote yet. They told me that typically the city, when they're doing work like this, would contact them or whatever contractor they're using to get quotes. So I also asked about their schedule, and they would not be able to get out there to remove the fence for at least five or six weeks, is what they're looking at. I don't know the cost. I would assume that it's going to be a fraction of what I initially paid. I don't want the fence destroyed, seeing that it's a year old and the materials are good. So I'm looking for either whether it's, you know, a contractor that you are going with that's doing the work to remove the fence and then put it in a place that's outside of the easement. I guess that's where I'm kind of looking for you guys to let me know what you can do. I'd be happy to call Hire back and get an exact quote and send that to the committee.
Did they indicate whether they can reuse the materials? Because to me, it looks, to me, it looks like you would take fifteen or twenty feet off of both sides, pull the post, and then move the back of the fence forward, right?
Yep, and the materials are great. They can reuse it. So it's not about replacing any part of the fence. It's only about moving it. Yeah, and that was the other concern of mine, is I didn't want whoever you guys are hiring just to knock it down and destroy the materials, because again, it's only a year old, and the materials are good and can be reused. So it's just, it's a matter of moving it.
Do you know why Hire would have put that thing within eighteen inches of the sewer line?
I don't. I provided them the plot map that I got from this office, and then they called Iowa One Dot for location, and that's what they used to determine.
Beth, is it, is it a true plot map that we hand out? Because that map would have the, would have the easement listed on it, wouldn't it?
What was given to her was not a plat map. It was simply just a site plan that was drawn on a piece of paper. It's not from the, it wasn't from the plat directly.
And just FYI, I tried to find any where I could on, on the county website. Plats aren't, you can't find, I couldn't find the plat. I can find the description of the property.
If it's in one of the newer subdivisions, you'd probably be able to find that information. Being the age of when the Sun Valley subdivision was built, not all that information is directly as available on the speaking website as what a newer subdivision would be.
And then as far-
Beth, could you, oh, go ahead, Russ, I'm sorry.
I guess the other thing too is that her copy of the plat would probably be with the abstract, which is if there's a loan on the property, that, that would be, the bank would have it. Go ahead, Jim, I'm sorry.
No, I was just asking if Beth maybe wanted to review her counsel, the permitting process for fences, because we don't really do inspections. It's mostly, we don't charge, I don't believe either. We just want the property owner to come in, and so they understand what the ordinance is. And along, and Brooke talked about getting her neighbor's permission, because it was within somebody's feet of the property line, which can be done. So maybe just, you know, explain the process, that the reason that we have the permitting process for fences?
Main reason we have processed the fences has been to minimize fence disputes, which we were getting, you know, more and more of. We don't, you know, charge for a fence permit, but we are trying to encourage people to, you know, properly, you know, place their fences.
I was charged for a fence permit.
Would be the recording fee, because you were putting it closer to the property line. So once you get within five feet of the property line, which I think that's why you have to go to your neighbors, you're basically charged for the recording fee that the recorder charges us for. But if you did not build within there, you would not have been charged any fee.
I was, yeah, I have a receipt for a fee for thirty dollars. Is that the, that's the fence agreement?
That's what the recorder costs.
Okay. Okay.
I have a couple of questions. What's our timeline on this? Obviously, we want to get in there and start doing some work. When?
With the approval of the project tonight, we are going to be asking for approval by council to also approve the contracts and bonds based on receipt and review by staff. So construction is nearly imminent. I mean, we're talking within a couple of weeks potentially.
Okay, you said a couple of weeks. Brooke, if I may ask again, would, you told me what Hire said as far as removing that, or moving that fence. What is their timeline?
When I talked to them two weeks ago, they said they were six weeks out. So I'm, and that's, that's a best-case scenario. So I'm looking at maybe four or five weeks from now. I don't know if there's another company that could get in there sooner. I called Hire because they were the ones who originally installed.
So that is absolutely not going to work with your timeline, right, Nate? See, okay.
I don't, I don't-
So council has come, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Permanent structure that is in within that easement, and certainly not a fence, but I don't know for sure.
Are the posts on the fence, the support posts cemented in, or are they just dug in?
They're dug in.
I would say Eastern Iowa would probably be willing to relocate the fence, but as far as the cost of that work, I guess that is what's up for discussion, if potentially the route to have Eastern Iowa do the work would be considered.
Okay, that takes- They could at least, they could at least remove the fence without damage, you think, Nate? If she couldn't get Hire or someone in to at least get it out of the way and not have any permanent damage done to the materials?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so council comes down to, do you feel that it's the city's responsibility, you know, as part of this permitting process, to identify and notify permit holders on easements? Or if you don't feel it's the city's responsibility, then, to me, that's what it comes down to. Do you feel the city should have done this, that they, if they should have, then we failed to, and then therefore maybe we are culpable? And again, this is your discussion. I'm just trying to move this along.
I certainly feel like the city's at least partly responsible for this. I, I kind of feel like ultimately, the homeowner is responsible for finding out this information. However, Brooke did do all the due diligence to find out, you know, if there's something going on here, and was basically told, yeah, you can put the fence right here. And I'm going to guess that the fence is put where it was drawn out, right? Yeah, okay. So the city's at least partly responsible for this. That's my take, anyway.
What, what would happen?
Is there a motion to do, do something here?
I was just, I was just going to throw out, what about, what about a compromise where we take, we take the fence out and store the materials, you know, as our, at our expense, and you just have to have the back end put back in again? I mean, that'd be kind of a compromise, but it's, that way, there's a little bit of responsibility on both sides.
Yeah, we have another issue, though. Apparently, she has two dogs, and those dogs are in a contained area. What do we do to keep the dogs in the contained area?
It mentioned that she can take care of that.
I can, I can take care of the temporary, I mean, whether I had to pay for it, or you guys had to pay for it. My dogs are my responsibility, so I will put something temporary to contain them while the work's being done. That's the problem.
Well, I would be more-
Go ahead.
I'd be more inclined to have part of the construction taking the fence down and put back up by whoever she chooses, and we pay for that to be done. I think she did what she was supposed to do. Citizens aren't supposed to know everything that goes on, on their property. They, some do. I went as an example. So I'm siding with her on, I think that she should have been told where to put that fence or where not to.
Can I have something in the form of a motion, then?
I'll make a motion to do what we just said, remove the fence, no cost to her, put it back up, and no cost to her. No changes. If there's damage, if the time is taken down, we'll pay for that also.
I'll second that motion.
Motion second for the city to be responsible for the relocation, if you will, just to simplify the thing. And then if there's any damage, the city would also hold either the contractor responsible or cover those damages. Any other discussion?
Yeah, just a point, then, we're not going to put that fence back on the easement, is that correct?
That's correct.
That, that would be, that would be part of the-
And I'm fine with that. I wouldn't have put it there if I knew, but yeah, no, I'm fine with it being outside the easement area, so.
I, and as part of the discussion, I'm just going to explain why I'm going to vote no, because I kind of wanted to split this fifty-fifty. That would be my compromise, so, just so you know.
I feel that we might also be looking over the precedent of this consent. And as you said, there's other neighbors who have moved items at their own-
Craig, could you stay close to the microphone, please?
I'm trying to look, look at the other council members while I'm talking. I'm, I'm just kind of questioning the precedence of this consent, knowing that there are other neighbors that have already moved items or in future cases where this may come up again, in which, because something was built on an easement, is it the city's responsibility to pay even any of it or all of it for the moving of that structure?
That concerns me also, setting a precedent. How is that going to go for the future people? I know somebody down the street that has two oak trees, beautiful oak trees, that have to come down. Are we going to replace their oak trees, because it's on the-
And, and I thought-
Did they pull a permit?
My concern there is-
Did they pull a permit and then ask the city where to put them? No, that's the difference.
No, they did not.
Yeah, I think this is what we're talking about. As a citizen, she did what she was supposed to do. She gave up City Hall. She got a permit. We didn't give her the correct information or enough information. I don't know why we would penalize her, and I don't think it's setting a precedent, because if other people have done the same thing, then it's our fault again.
Yeah, I have to side with Bob on this one, too. Other, I don't think it is setting a precedent, because, again, as has already been stated, I can't emphasize it enough, she did her due diligence to do what was right and to do what was, you know, in ordinances and everything for the city. So I don't think that she should be penalized for that. I certainly understand your point, Russ, about fifty-fifty. And to be honest, I kind of thought that way initially, too. But the more I sit here and think about it, the more I think that she, she's not at fault here at all.
Beth, do we, do we have copies of the, we don't have copies of the plats at City Hall either, do we? I mean, do we need to put a new disclaimer on, on this process, then? That says that in the future, homeowners are responsible to verify that nothing's on the, on an easement?
Yes, we do need, we need to tighten that up. And then if we do that, and the property owner then does not realize or does not pay attention to the easement, then yes, I don't think we're setting a precedent again. We will have, we're already defined whose responsibility it is to locate, determine and locate the easement and so on, so on the property owner. In this case, we didn't do it, like we need to and should in the future.
Well, in Nate's diagram, he had access to it. So Nate, where did you get your, where did you get access?
They can be very difficult to locate, but it's the county recorder's website, and there's a search process on there. And because, as Beth mentioned, it's an older document, it's even more difficult to find, so. But we did find them.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion on the motion to accept financial responsibility for the relocation of the fence?
Just one last thing. Beth, what is the setback from the rear line of a property to?
The setback for a fence is five feet from the property line. However, if there's an easement there, it's two feet back, and easement is where the fence should go, is the recommendation.
That was, I knew it was five foot, but I wasn't sure about the easement clause in there. Thank you.
So with that in mind, how did Hire do it at eighteen inches?
It ate from the main, the sanitary sewer main. So that has nothing, no bearing on the property line, has no bearing from the easement. It has more to do with the location of the utilities that was performed by Iowa One.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, I'm sorry, Beth, help me out. Did I hear four or five ayes?
Four, four ayes, one nay.
Okay, thank you. All right, please contact staff tomorrow, Brooke, and we'll help you get through this as quickly as possible.
Great, thank you. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Okay, next item then is, item B is the Esberry Road and Hales Mill Roundabout. Before we take citizen input, I wanted to give some background for those who wish to speak tonight, just so you understand. So going back at least four years, council and MSA conducted, we spent a couple of years looking at traffic, traffic studies, options, addressing the traffic backups at the intersection of Hales Mill and Esberry Road, and Radford, Radford Road and Esberry Road. And through the process of more than two years, eventually, the council settled on a single roundabout at the intersection of Hales Mill Road and Esberry that would continue south from the intersection and, and connect with Radford Road, about three or four houses down from the existing intersection. And at that point, the intersection at Radford and Esberry, as we know it today, would have been removed, abandoned, or somehow closed off. This council spent a lot of time, the city spent a lot of money, even to the point that when we hit COVID, you know, in the twenty, late, mid to late twenty-twenty, council kind of delayed making a decision because, one, you know, there wasn't, the traffic wasn't there, and, second, the southwest area was open up. We weren't sure what impact that would have on traffic through, through Esberry. So eventually, a council did decide on a single four-legged roundabout at Esberry, and Beth, I don't know if you can show that, I guess you will, at Esberry and Hales Mill Road. And then early, and don't quote me on dates here, I apologize, but at some point, about a year, within a year after, in the year timeframe, from when the council chose the single roundabout option, Luther Manor came forward and, you know, said they weren't informed, and they were very upset with the council's plans and how it disrupted their potential development as they continued to expand the Luther Manor community, campus, if you will, the side-by-side townhouses, things like that. So council listened to them and then relented, and then went into a dual roundabout, one at Esberry and Hales Mill, and a second at Esberry and Radford. Since that time, council has, we have secured funding for the three-legged roundabout at Esberry and Hales Mill Road. Nothing is finalized, so the contract's awarded, but I will tell you, this council has not wavered one bit on that, on that. There has been a lot of talk about the impact of the roundabout and the traffic and things like that. And tonight, the discussion should be limited to, your comments hopefully are limited to Phase Two. Will Phase Two be a second roundabout at Esberry and Radford, as council has relented and given to Luther Manor's wishes? Or do they, or does Phase Two revert back to the original plan that they approved more than two years ago, where the four-legged roundabout would continue south from Esberry and Hales Mill and connect with Radford? The city has received significant funding. About ninety percent of the project has been funded through state grants. The contract has been awarded to MSA to begin the design process. It's about eighteen months out or longer before it's actually built. But my point is, if you have a concern about the roundabout today, that's, that's not what council discussed. They have set their decision, the roundabout will be there. The discussion tonight is, will there be a second roundabout, or will we go back to the original design where there was a four-legged roundabout at Esberry and Hales Mill? Luther Manor, as you know, they came out, didn't want it. And then the time, from the time they came in, asked the council to change their plans until they went into receivership. They not, once they ever reached out to the city and discussed their future plans. So now, when we heard that they're in receivership, and the properties that we would have needed to complete this project now are up for sale, the city is in a position that if they're going to make a change and revert back to the original plan, the time to do so is now. So that's the background. This is about Phase Two. Phase One, doesn't matter if we're doing one roundabout or two, the roundabout that you see in 2025 will not change. So with that being said- um, we'll open it up for citizens' input. Again, um, we're here to talk about phase two. So that's the that's the agenda item tonight. That's what we want to hear your, you know, your your input on. So we'll start with who's in the chamber first, and then when that's done, Beth, to help me find out who's, you know, when we're done with that, and then we'll take the people on Zoom. And we'll give you instructions when that time comes. So anybody address the council on the on the roundabout, uh, revert back to the signal roundabout at Asbury and Hales Mill Road, phase two. Um, we'd love to hear your your opinion or your 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 comments at this time.
Hello again. Hi, I'm Kathy Canfield. This is Kevin, my husband. We live at twenty-four seventy-three Radford Road for the last thirty-four years. Uh, we do have a few concerns and questions about the new roundabout, well, phase two of the roundabout. Um, first thing was, is it really gonna help putting three busy roads, you're running Radford, Hales Mill, and Asbury all into one roundabout? Is that really gonna help relieve late traffic? Um, for that part, you know, instead of two separate roundabouts, because Radford can still go on, and then Hales Mill can still go on, instead of trying to combine three roads into one roundabout itself? Um, our property value will go down. Um, who wants to live next to a very busy road that runs, it's gonna run the whole length of our property and very close to the property lines, and then on the other side of our house, we have a daycare center? So who wants to buy a house with a daycare center on one side and a busy road on the other side? Um, and that's, well, that's gonna be our retirement money, was hopefully our house. Um, the busy street creates noise and light problems. Our bedrooms are on that side of the house, headlights going up and down the street, the noise of the cars, the trucks, the snowplows, the garage, the garbage trucks, et cetera. We want to know what does the city have, Asbury have, for requirements on noise and light barriers for the streets? We bought our house because we have a park-like backyard. We have almost an acre lot, which offers a lot of privacy to our house. Now the house and the yard will be fully exposed. We fear for the safety of our grandkids and our pets. We have never had to worry about our kids growing up, and now we have grandkids that we'd like them to be able to enjoy the same backyard that we had before. With all the traffic going by, the grandkids will not be able to be kids. We will there be a fence there to protect their safety. Another question. Our house was built in nineteen fifty-two. We have a cinder block basement. Our fear is when the trucks, the moving dirt, paving, and heavy traffic, will that create cracks in our foundation? So with all the concerns, we are wondering if we will, I said, hate to say it, do we need to get a lawyer to protect the value of our property so that we can be compensated for the loss of our property value? And then it finally, we would welcome any chance to be able to talk to any of you guys concerning with our concerns, and if we could have everything in writing. And then I guess I just wanna, we want to thank you for your time, and we hope the council will reconsider their plans for the one roundabout and not keep the two roundabouts.
Why do we keep changing?
I don't know.
Excuse me, hey, Beth?
Yes, Jim?
I lost audio. Sarah, is she hearing it?
Hold us down the whole time I talk?
I have no audio either.
Your stage, so. Okay.
Oh, back on, back on. Yes.
It's on. All right, thank you.
Great. I'll start again. I'm Carla Bragg, and I and my husband and I live at fifty-one sixty-eight Rolling Hills Point in a Luther Manor townhome we purchased almost four years. We're at the end of the cul-de-sac with our backyard, abutting the course of the one leg of the proposed roundabout, according to the letter and the second map Asbury sent out, and my husband and I have some concerns. Let me begin by saying that we know that Asbury Road is a major road in the east-west corridor coming out of Dubuque, needs some kind of major improvements to the traffic flow. We don't want to stop any roundabouts. We just want to suggest that the design Asbury picked to address the problem may not be the best remedy. Also, I read the two hundred and twenty-seven page traffic study prepared by MSA out of Madison, Jan. Swear to God, I didn't read all the charts and the graphs, but I read all the maps and I read all the rest of it, and I understood it. It was really interesting, and you know what? You should read it if you want, because it's attached, uh, to the agenda. Anyway, um, the map that the city sent to the neighbors was not the only solution that was presented to the council. And all this is history for me, that I didn't even know was happening because I wasn't here. Um, the MSA study had a solution, which was one intersection with the four-legged roundabout. They didn't say that that had to be at Hayes Mills Road and the alley. It it could have been in several places. In fact, there's three different diagrams in there, three different places it could have been. Okay, and another solution, the study had a diagram for two roundabouts, one off Hayes Mills and one at Radford. The city, but the city council made their decision from and selected from those possibilities. They were all good possibilities, and I can't imagine how much time you spent doing that. What I want to comment on is the design. We are here to talk about tonight, the one the council chose, the one proposing a four-legged roundabout at the Hayes Mills, Hales Mills Road, one leg of which would go right up against the property line in our backyard, as it is connected up with Radford. I understand that the city has funding for the first phase, the three-legged roundabout from Asbury. And that goes around, and then it's Asbury, and then it goes around and it's Hales Mill. And I understand that that's fully funded. I heard that. I hope that's true. Um, but the fourth leg, the one that has the most folks here tonight, the road that would go through our backyards, the second phase of that plan has not yet been funded. Is that true? Okay. And this is an aside, I should. When I read that MSA study on page five, they said that, um, as far as funding goes, that ECIA did a traffic study on whether it's hazardous out there, whether there's a lot of crashes or how many crashes there are. And they determined that it wasn't a hazardous road. Asbury Road isn't hazardous, it's just slow. So there's all kinds of grants and funding the city can get. There's all kinds of grants and funding the city could get if it was hazardous.
What? You put the towels on.
I'm still talking, the the if you have questions, I'll be glad to answer them. The.
I think someone was muted. Someone was muted, sorry.
Do I have to stop talking?
No, no, I'm sorry, Carla, I I think someone on Zoom was muted. Nobody was interrupting you, it was just inadvertent background noise. Please, please continue.
Oh, oh, somebody else was on Zoom? I hated Zoom. Okay. I'm just saying you're losing a funding stream, and it might be hard to get the funds for the fourth leg. So this is, I'm offering solutions. I want you to reconsider the design for for these reasons. Of course, our property values would drop significantly. Who wants a curved road coming down the hill behind their house, mere feet away from their bedroom windows, and I could go over there and point to our house, and it's like ten feet away from that pink line? Um, our backyard neighbors would also lose property values. This leg off the roundabout would be going downhill, come and walk around the yards. The map makes it look like it's flat, but it is a downhill grade. Cars would be careening onto the rooftops of the townhomes below if we had an ice storm or a drunk driver. Also, water runs downhill, so the poor folks on Radford Road, where the roundabout road connects to Radford, would have flooding and a big rain. Instead of grass and trees to mitigate the runoff, there would be pavement. And of course, um, Kathy mentioned noise, lights, exhaust. Our home is right up against the road, the only townhouse that is. Maggie Delaney, who lives in the other side of the townhouse and is here tonight, um, would also be affected the same as us. There are better options for consideration. Two three-legged roundabouts, one at Hayes Mills and one at Radford. That's the one I'd I'd consider. Um, or if you want to do a big one, the realignment of Hayes Mills Road, according according to alternative one, page twenty-six of the traffic study report. And what that is, it's disalignment brings Hayes Mills Road over through a cornfield on the north side of Asbury Road and directly connects it with Radford, and that's where you'd put the roundabout or the lights or whatnot. Now, there's no houses over there, and I don't know if you'd have to go through the city Dubuque, because I don't know where the city Dubuque ends. I mean, I haven't seen a a map that I could figure it out. Um, I think that's a good solution, too. Um, but I wasn't in on any of the study sessions ASA must have had with city council members. I I realize there's a lot I don't know. Tons I don't know. I'm not really questioning your due diligence. The biggest bit of missing information for me is the cost. I have never seen an icon I could click on and say, oh, yeah, the approximate cost for that leg is blah, and the cost for, you know, the one up at top of Radford is something else, so we can compare. How 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 would I know? That's something that you knew. Okay, when you made your decision, and I respect that. That, but I, we do know the fourth leg through the, our neighborhood, isn't funded yet. But if you don't change the design to realign Hayes Mills Road to meet Bradford at Asbury, that gets orange on anyway. Then you're never gonna be able to do it, because the minute you start construction on the three-legged roundabout, the only other solution, as far as I'm concerned, is the second three-legged roundabout at Radford. Because my God, you're not gonna put one lane up there and then tear it up, you know, to come around through the cornfield. So those were just my thoughts. And again, I apologize, I don't want to seem patronizing, but because I do know that there's plenty I don't know, but I do know my husband and I have our life savings invested in that townhouse, as do many of the residents, and we're counting on that for our kids. So, um, we did not expect that when we moved out here. So thank you very much.
My name's Russ Cruz. I live at two four three three Radford Road. I bought my house in two thousand and eleven, um, married, got three kids. And, uh, that road would be right to the north of my property and run the full length of it. It. And I, too, live in an older house that has block wall foundation. I don't think will handle dozers outrunning, building a road, rainwater, there's all kinds of issues, um, which I'm sure MSA is trying to address somehow, but, uh, I remember this all coming up in twenty twenty, that I swear there was three or four prints out, different designs they sent out. And then in twenty-one, we got a print saying that we're gonna take my house and the one right to the north of it. That would have been in January of twenty-one, I believe. And, uh, I don't know, six months or a year ago, I made a phone call to the city to ask how the project was coming along, and I couldn't remember who I talked to, but they said that this was killed, which wasn't going to happen. Because of Luther Manor. You know, we got a letter two weeks ago, day or two later, later, we got another letter. Our house was gone, our house wasn't gone, um, you know, and I'm, you know, it's, it's, I don't know. I want to scream, kick, and cry. Uh, what are we doing? What are we not doing? Um, and I just want to be taken care of fairly, is really what it amounts to. Um, I do think this is designed with money, with mostly money in mind. Um, I think that's why it's one property. I don't understand how moving that road down there to a T, um, is going to solve any problem. It just moved the bottom net. Traffic can't flow through that T like that. The the plan, the plan in twenty-one actually was curved, um. So I I guess I don't know what the last plan was. I guess I didn't follow it that close, um. But, uh, I do think it's gonna decrease my property value. Be a safety concern for my family. And I'm not thrilled about it. I I'm kinda to the point where either buy my house or make that road disappear. You know, or or compensate people fairly. I just don't think that road fits on one lock that's a hundred foot wide. I'm no engineer, but, uh, to me, that's just done based on saving money. And, uh, I don't understand what the city's trying to do with the commercial property or potential commercial property in the future. And to me, that says this is more about money than it is, um, roadway. So it would be nice to try to get some answers as to what's going to happen, what plan is gonna be put in place, so we can try to move on one way or the other. But, uh, I think that's all I've got. Um, well, as as the city hired anybody, I I guess, as far as that, you know, seeing what this will do to property values?
We can't answer your questions. In our form of government, we're just taking your input.
Yeah, it'd just be nice to know, you know, what what is going to happen? Are we gonna be compensated if the road is put through? Are we not? Are we, you know? What is gonna happen? I mean, is this? When you really dig into this, I did talk to an attorney about this. When you really dig into it, it is really designed to, in my opinion, save save the city money and and keep them out of any trouble or any potential, you know, issues owing anybody any money. Um, I think that's why the T is the way it is, too. It would just be nice to get some clarification on what's going on, if it really would, what's what's going to happen. All right, thank you.
My name's Ron Matts. I live at twenty-four fifty-two Radford Road, been there for thirty-nine years. Saw some changes, some we like, some we don't like. My concern is that road you're bringing down from Asbury is gonna go right into my driveway. I'm in the house with the carport, you see there. It's not only gonna cause me problems getting in and out of my driveway, but as Carla said, the water's coming down through there. Where are you gonna go with your snow? And the other thing is, if that happens, and I'm, I come down from Asbury Road, and I got a lot of traffic going north on Radford, I'm not coming out into that intersection, so I'm gonna block all the traffic coming down from Asbury Road. And the same thing is gonna happen for the people that live up in, live up in the circle. They have the same problem that I had. So I hope you've taken into consideration that it's not just the people on the west side of Radford that are gonna be affected, also the people on the east side of Radford that are affected. And we never got notified with anything. If we hadn't, if Kathy hadn't come over and talked to us, we would know none of this going on. So I think you need to do a little better job with getting this out to people and taking a real good look at what you got. Thank you.
Jim Sasse, and I reside at fifty-one eighty-one Rolling.
fifty-one eighty-one Rolling Hills Point, which is on the cul-de-sac, uh, just to the south of the curb. Um, a couple of, I, I'm a hundred percent for a roundabout, I think they're about as good as bottled beer and sliced bread. I mean, it's, they're useful. I go through hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of them, uh, in my travels all over the Midwest. So, not against the, uh, the roundabout, but I do have some, some concerns where we're located at. When the, if, if you go with the design you have and you come off Hills Mill, right now cars, lights hit the top of our house. If they come down that road, we're going to have headlights in our bedroom, sunroom, living room, dining room. And it, right now, Hills Mills, that gravel little extension, uh, if a car comes down there at night, maybe we get one every few weeks, you know, the light shines straight into us. But there's going to be hundreds and hundreds of cars every night, you know, disturbing our residents. I'd welcome or invite you to come up to the cul-de-sac and maybe you probably have driven up there and looked, but, four concerns, the light, of course, noise, devaluation of our, our house or our townhouse. The other thing is I'm really concerned about the safety of how that curve comes. Uh, three years ago, we had a car at a high speed come down Hills Mill, go over the embankment, just missed two of our houses, our house and another one, and then crashed into two other houses. And injured a lady that was in, in one of the townhouses. So if we're gonna, if you're gonna build that road coming straight south along Hills Mill and then curb, you're going to have to put in some, some type of, um, crash protection. Uh, curb, you know, the curbing that you see on highways, there's going to have to be some kind of protection for those townhouses. That still doesn't eliminate the noise and, and, uh, close proximity to, to those households there, but there's going to have to be consideration for that. Also, in some of that green space, uh, if this is the plan you're going to go with, there's going to have to be some kind of, um, green space, trees, evergreens, arperivites, something to block that light that comes down there. But when I look at it and I kind of go back to my, uh, sophomore class and high school geometry class, and I look at the hypotenuse of a triangle is always shorter than two sides. Uh, I don't understand why you wouldn't come off the roundabout on, on Asbury and angle it and then, then make it an angle coming down onto, uh, Radford and, and, uh, that would be a shorter distance, maybe saving some construction costs, uh, concrete, things like that. But it just, you know, just looking at it from a, from a geometric angle, but, uh, I guess those were my main concerns, light, pollution, noise, um, safety, and then of course devaluation of our townhomes there. So, uh, the other question I have, and I guess you can't answer anything, but, uh, phase one, looks like it's a go. Phase two, I haven't quite caught the timeline on phase two, uh, when that's, that's going to happen. But, uh, just my thoughts, my input on, on safety again, and then I would invite you to come up to fifty-one eighty-one, Rolling Hills Point, and I'd be glad to have you look out my windows and, and look straight up Hills Mill and just see what the issue is there, just not for our townhouse, but for, there's about five or six there that is going to be affected that way. Thank you for your time.
Hi, um, Rachel and Chris Weber, we live at fifty-ninety-one Asbury Road, and we actually just bought it two years ago. And we did not know about this roundabout until a week before we were going to purchase this house and then it was disclosed. And I have called the city of Asbury multiple times, asking about if we need to be worried about our property, and they have always told me no, that it's just going to be an easement in the front yard. Well, we didn't even have anything about phase one, but this is about phase two. So phase two, a week ago, they told us that they, our house was going to be open land. So we got a map in the mail thinking that we were going to lose our house, and then all of a sudden, three days later, now we're not losing our house. And now we're going to have, uh, the road in our backyard, we do have three kids. So my thing is just safety, like, there's going to be nothing in between the road and our house. So my question is, like, what's going to be there? Are they going to have guardrails, anything like that? You know, as far as safety for my kids in the backyard, like, being surrounded by a busy street in the front, now the side and the back, like, I just don't feel like that it would be safe for my kids.
And we also wanted to renovate our house a little bit. We only, we have three kids, only three bedrooms, we wanted to add a new bedroom. But now we see development opportunity where our plan is. What's the point of doing those kind of renovations if you guys plan to do something in the future that we're unaware of? And once again, property value, it's, it's not going to be what it is now. If, if we have that, that road wrapped around our house, we're going to be busy on all three sides of our road. It's going to be noisy. It's not going to be safe for our kids. We just have an open backyard, no fence, and it's very peaceful. And we're just worried about all those things.
And we just feel like if we, you know, we didn't buy this house because we wanted to be here forever, and we feel like when we do decide that we want to sell again, like, we're not going to be able to sell our house because of what you guys are doing with the roundabout and putting so many busy roads about, around one house. Nobody's going to want to buy that property. So, and then also what he was saying, like, that's the business development, you know, we want some answers about what's going to happen there because, I mean, that's going to affect us, too. Thank you.
Anne Rellich, hand fifty-seven ten Claybys Drive. This is the first time I've seen the drawing, I love roundabouts. I would have them everywhere, I think they move traffic very well. My question is, where you come down onto Radford Road, you've, you've put in the expense of the roundabout, but then you've almost got a huge bottleneck when you go onto, um, Radford Road. How are you going to control that traffic? Because I would think people are moving really nicely, then they get down to that intersection of the T and you're going to have to slow down, there's going to be people lined up behind you. Where's your stoplights going to be, or are you just going to have a stop sign? I just think you've done this wonderful thing up on Asbury Road, and then you've put a bottleneck over on Hills Mill. And, but I'm not an engineer, I don't understand that part, but what I'm seeing here, I don't understand that part, and I am all for putting roundabout, if you want to put one up on Radford and Asbury, I think it's fabulous. Thank you.
I'm Brian Nises.
And I'm Sean Kramer.
Um, we live at five one three three Asbury Road, which is the ground zero for the roundabout. Um, I've lived there for this, my seventh or eighth year. Um, we rent from Luther. We were one of the first properties that Luther Manor bought that we know of. Um, on the other side of the, um, Hills Mill extension was, Phil, Phil's house, no, it was Phil's. And Phil moved to a smaller place and Hills Mill bought it. Behind our house was Joe's house. And Joe's house was bought by Luther. And then when this idea came about, Mary Jo, who lost her husband Jim, it was a sudden where their property was now. They, um, were, you know, talked to by the city, and then the city, or the Hill, but Luther Manor. And then they, with this roundabout idea, they decided not to. And then when you guys bought your house, um, you know, I feel like we were the ones that this was going to go down. And, you know, if Brooke has got you guys to pay for moving a fence, I feel like every single person around us knew, except for apparently the realtor and you guys. And I think, you know, we knew from the moment we got that place, it was going to get bulldozed because Luther Manor had planned on building to the corner. That was like their goal. And they were moving their way up, and now that they're, um, broke, you know, then the house behind us, you can see the for sale sign. We just had an assessor at our house yesterday, and someone checked the furnace today. And, you know, we might not even make it to who knows. Because if they have to sell the house, and I wonder who is going to buy it, except maybe the city, because again, we're ground zero. But when you moved Hills Mill from east to west, um, you guys were talking about, um, headlights coming in. That's what's happening to us now. Headlights are coming in our windows every day. There's a mile of cars at Hills Mill that can't turn left because of this bump. And then, um, our mailboxes were actually hit because somebody lost control at Hills Mill, slid across the, this road, hit our mailboxes. And, um, they were, you know, like the telegraph one snapped off, the advertiser one wasn't the same after that. And then our mailboxes had cracks and broken parts. And so there is a real, you know, safety issue. And like I said, we've known from the start that we weren't going to be here until the end. But now, you know, with, uh, I guess uncertainty of Luther Manor, the uncertainty of the roundabout, and definitely that road is going to, even if we're back off the road and somehow the roundabout spared us, that phase two certainly um, so I just want to make everyone aware that I think it was coming, what happened to you guys? And Shannon, you want to talk?
Yeah, um, a lot of the residents that this is affecting has been, um, notified by the city of Asbury with a map and a notification. We did not receive anything, and the renters across the Hills Mill extension did not receive anything. I don't know if that was supposed to be done by Luther Manor, or if we were just left off the list. Um, we would like to, the only reason we know about this is because it was on the front page of the Telegraph Herald, and, um, it said about the meeting here. Um, and I've talked to some of the neighbors, um, in the Luther Manor townhouses and, and to the side of us. So we would request, you know, having the same information because, um, when you rent, there's a certain timeline that you get, like, when you're being told you have to move legally, they only have to give you thirty days. When you have almost ten years of stuff in your house, it becomes a little bit more complicated. And finding a place that has, you know, will allow pets and things like that. So, you know, we just want to be more aware of, we have the same information that everybody else has. And we are really going to miss that place because it's beautiful backyard, beautiful area. It, more green space needs to be done.
Yeah, and I guess if, if you had two roundabouts, and I love roundabouts, and when they built the one by Finn, but they didn't have the one at Loris, it was like zoom and hit the brakes. And if you did two of them, it would be the same, zoom and hit the brakes. And to me, um, Highway twenty got lights turned and you go down the road. You know, I mean, you are going up the highway and you might go through every light. If you're coming down the highway, you might hit every light red. But a couple of stoplights to me seems like the smallest price and the least problems, you know? You know, just, uh, if we're worried about money, that seems like you couldn't, with fiber optics or whatever, you know, and they know when the people are sitting at the stoplights to turn the lights for them. It seems like you could avoid all of this. And unfortunately, our house would still go eventually, for whoever the highest bidder is, or Luther Manor, or the city. But, you know, just for all our, you know, it seems like a price tag on a couple of stoplights. Maximize the
Beth, we want to take, I think we're going to be on Zoom now. Beth?
Yeah, um, Alice, did you want to say anything?
Anyone on Zoom would like to speak, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Alice, take your turn first. That person signed in as Darlene's iPad.
Anyone on Zoom would like to adjust the councils, just unmute yourself, state your name, please.
Here's, there's no comments from, um, people that are on Zoom.
Tell us you're ready to take it back to the table for discussion. Okay, let's back to the council for discussion.
Jim, do you want to have Jake, or sorry, Nate, uh, address some of the concerns that were expressed?
Uh, if you'd like, I just, I do want to clarify a couple of things is, uh, there was a map that was mailed out inadvertently, uh, we, we got it the next day and sent out new ones and, and so there was some confusion. And the second thing was we, we only notified property owners and, you know, that were adjacent to the road, we might have missed, maybe didn't look across the road in Radford, and for the renters, we notified the property owners of record, we didn't, we didn't go out to the tenants, we followed up to the landlord, maybe to pass that on. So whatever you want from Nate, go ahead, and it's, it's back to council for discussion.
Yeah, I'll be up here, I do want to mention that, uh, Ben Wilkinson, uh, traffic engineer with MSA is also on the call, and he may be able to answer many of these questions much better than, than I can, so I may just defer to him. Um, Ben, if you're available to, to speak.
Yeah, I'm, I'm available, I would say that if you have a specific question you'll need to ask. I, I couldn't hear half of the things that were being said there, so you'll have to, you'll have to let me know.
Anything specifically, or do you just want me to start?
Well, you want to go through the process, I'll answer the question about why we then looked further into lights after we discussed that, and the benefit of one roundabout as two, that type of stuff.
Yeah, um, I guess Ben, one of the big things is what, what would be the, the biggest benefit of the one four-leg roundabout versus two roundabouts? Maybe to start with?
Yeah, I can, I mean, I can give you a little bit on that. Um, again, it's been a long time since we worked on some of these things, and I'm, I'm working a little bit from memory here, I apologize. I, I was not around today to prepare, but, uh, looking at the report and, and from memory, I will say that, um, obviously, as some, I, I did hear some of the conversation there, we did spend a lot of time looking at this. We originally were looking at the Radford intersection. We originally were looking at the Radford intersection. Um, it grew into looking at the Hales Mill intersection, which, um, ultimately is, is the one that needed, needed something done sooner than later. Uh, once, one intersection versus two is, is always something that we would prefer, especially when you have two intersections kinda closely spaced because they have to interact together. So, you know, we, we presented in their, in their initial traffic study, the alternatives with realigning Radford Road into one intersection. Um, there, there are alternatives, as, as everybody knows, that, that don't real, necessarily realign um, with, with two roundabouts. It, it, it will still work, um, or we wouldn't have recommend, or wouldn't have included that as an alternative. Um, will it work as well or as efficiently as one intersection at one location? No, that's, that's why we ultimately were looking at the one intersection alternative as the best alternative. Um, that's not to say that some, one of the other alternatives wouldn't work too. This, this is just the most efficient as far as the location of, of this alternative. We looked at three, as, as we earlier stated, there were some costs done at the time, looking at the different costs, um, of the alternatives and, uh, the council, um, moved forward with this alternative as the best one at that time.
Yeah, hey, if I can jump in real quick to some questions, uh, from the residents. The mid-block intersection, the realignment, mid-block was eliminated early on because of the, the costs were significantly higher due to the, the amount of roadway and the acquisition. The realignment of Hales Mill Road where it would come and meet up with Bradford was, was eliminated. It was cost and partially because a good portion of that road would've had to leave the City of Asbury. It was not to be built within the corporate limits. Um, there were a lot of very tight intersection there. And then the other thing that came up was the timeline, whether it was a dual three-legged roundabout option or whether it's a single four-legged, there is no timeline on the four, on, on phase two. We, we focused on phase one, as I, I stated, the funding's there, the timetable is set, it's pretty much ready to go. Um, phase two has been fluid all along in, in terms of the timeframe. Uh, funding is certainly something we would wanna be looking at, but, uh, we can't give you a timeline because we've never discussed any further than, than phase one in terms of when.
And then I, I could speak to, um, as well with the T-intersection that's proposed that varies from the initial plan, um, that we had had here where Radford would actually have a curve um, into another curve to match into the four-legged roundabout. Um, the T-intersection here would function, correct me if I'm wrong, Ben, it would function just fine. Uh, we, we would consider likely that what would happen is there'd be a stop sign placed, um, for traffic that would be heading southbound on Radford Road, right there where Beth is pointing with her mouse. And if you look north of that, that yellow area would basically be green space. So Radford would no longer connect to Asbury Road. So the only traffic, um, really that you would see having to stop at that stop sign would be people in and out of the daycare and then other residents that live in that subdivision, um, off, I believe it's Asbury Circle, um, is the, the road there. Um, so then traffic would freely be able to move on Radford Road, turning off and on there at that ninety-degree T-intersection.
And, and we did go to the T, that was a staff, staff decision. We, we brought this back to council to minimize the, reduce the cost. We could go back into some type of a, a curve there and maybe take out the one property and, you know, his concern with his property being devalued could be addressed and then his property would be acquired and then we could put the, the curve in. Um, that's probably, you know, phase two B kinda thing discussion, but, uh, we did in, in discussion with, with the engineers and staff, we went to the T-intersection as, as a cost savings thing. So council, the question is, do you, you know, where do you wanna go? I mean, um, as you know, these properties are on the market or will be very soon. That was kinda the sense of urgency that came into this is that if, if you were going to revert back to original plan, we asked you to make that decision in a timely manner. Uh, so as the, the acquisition made sense now, the city would do so. We're not compelled to acquire anything regardless of your decision tonight, but it, it's to you for discussion. Where do you wanna go? Do you wanna stay with the dual three-legged or, or, or the original plan that we have, uh, displayed right now?
Uh, Jim, before I, I, I'll go to that in just a second here, but I did wanna address some comments. I believe that, uh, it was Russ Cruz that, that made mention of the fact that we were looking at the cost. And, uh, I can most assuredly tell every person in this room, this council always looks at the cost because it's not a cost to the city, it's a cost to all of us. We all live here too, we all pay taxes just like you and the city produces nothing. Everything that we get financially comes from the citizens. So we are always being a good watchdog of, of your money because that's what it comes down to. Whenever we spend tax dollars, we're looking at your money. But there, there are other costs too. There's costs of, of misplacing people for their homes and there's misplacing people because of the business. The, uh, second roundabout would, uh, would cause some, some undue hardship on Frog Hollow. And, uh, I'm just telling you what we were, what we were told.
Second roundabout takes out Frog Hollow?
Yes.
Just look at the diagram, it's in the, we can't interact.
Again, sorry, so I, I'm set, what I'm trying to get to here is, you know, we look at, we look at all of these things before we make our decision and, and yeah, there is a financial thing and we're, and we're always looking out or trying to, we're always looking out for the, the taxpayers' money to say that we're gonna get the best bang for our buck. And, uh, you know, there, there are other things that are involved. There's a land purchase cost, uh, that may have disqualified some of these options. I mean, we, we did our due diligence. Did we see everything? I don't think that there's humanly possible for someone to see everything, but we, we do the best that we can. And we, we do, in, um, we do look to your, we'll do the best that we can, always. Um, and, and any case, um, that being said, um, I guess I would move forward with the single roundabout with the phase one as it is. Jim, do you need that in the form of a motion?
Not yet, we wanna talk about it first, please. Yeah, but.
He can make a motion if he chooses, it doesn't have to be seconded.
Talk about it, okay, please.
Um, you can't, Russ, you can't prohibit someone from making a motion. I, I understand what you're saying, but you can't tell me can't make a motion. I, I, I agree with you, but. At this point, I have a motion. Is there a second?
Actually, uh, Jim, I didn't really make a motion. I asked if this needed to be made a motion.
Okay, sorry.
It's okay, go ahead, Russ.
My apologies also. Um, since phase two, uh, just so people here understand, phase one is the three-legged roundabout that you see up at the top, okay? Um, that, that, that's, that's phase one right there. That wouldn't, that wouldn't impact any homes as it's presented. Um, the two options for phase two are what you saw, um, there. And then could you bring up the diagram for the two-legged roundabout so people can see what the other? This is, this would be the other phase two option. You know, we're talking about two different phase two options. So I want people to be able to see if they haven't seen it, what, what they are. So, um, this phase, as you can see, the, the business, the only, only things that this phase is wiping out is basically Frog Hollow. Now, we can't talk, um, but, um, so this is, this is, so phase two would either be this or the, the one where we had it going down. And I believe that people received inadvertently a, a map. That was the original four-legged roundabout, which was then cha-changed what we have now based on cost. Right, so we can go, um, in between and, and with the T-intersection. I personally don't like the T-intersection at all, but I, I like it when we curve back down on Radford. Um, and I do understand where people are coming from. Uh, and, and believe me, when we originally discussed this, I think you guys will remember, I said maybe we should have stoplights, but we've gotten past that and I've gotten past that. Um, but where I'm at right now, just with all of the impact, I think we were ready to proceed, obviously, with phase one. But I think we need to have a little more discussion on phase two. If that, that's just my opinion. But the reason that we're talking now and, and Jim will remind me is the major reason that we're talking about this right now is because Luther Manor's putting all these properties up for sale, okay? So conscientiously, we don't want somebody to buy those places, remodel them, build them up only for us to come through and then if we decide to go this route, tear it down. That doesn't make any sense. So what we're trying to do is, is, is look, be judicious with, with the taxpayer money and also trying to figure out what the best way to do it is. So that's just my two cents.
And please remember what Jim said. Right now, we are looking at phase one and on the CIP, it says twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six. Phase two, we're more or less gonna look at in the future if there's something needs to be done.
So basically, just, just all of the properties that Luther Manor own are, they, they're not all for sale yet, but my understanding is they will be short. That, that's word on the street. So the two rental properties up along, uh, Asbury Road will, they're not on the market yet. They potentially will be, but everything else has been for sale. The one that we never saw come up is the one on the bottom where it's currently owned by a, an LLC called Flipping Homes. So.
Bob, Craig, you wanna chime in before I make a motion?
Then, uh, then I would make a motion to proceed with, uh, phase one of the, uh, single roundabout at Hales Mill and Asbury Road.
Correction, are just phase one or phase two?
I thought I said phase one if you didn't hear me, sorry.
Well, phase one is just, phase one, we're already doing, we've got the funding, we're moving forward to this three-legged roundabout. So phase two is when we have to move forward to do the connection and that's what we're looking for the motion on.
Okay, so that if I make a motion to proceed as, as we've already discussed, then is, is that acceptable? I'm asking.
What, what does that entail?
Yeah, that, I mean.
I think it does. I, I.
Phase two would be to make this a four-lane roundabout and connect to Bradford Road. That would be the clarification.
I'll make a motion to table phase two until we have a chance to sit down and talk about it, maybe a little bit more. I understand why we wanna buy these properties, they really, really do. But there's a lot of concerns that are raised and, and phase one's gonna go through. So I'll make a motion to table it at least until we can have a little bit more discussion. I don't know, I mean, I would.
I have a motion to table, is there a second? I'm sorry, did, did Kurt, did you make a motion? Because I, I was trying to understand if you were. I'm sorry, did, did Kurt make a motion?
Um, Russ made a motion to table.
Uh, he did, but I, I was, I'm just asking if, if Kurt was struggling with, with the wording. I didn't know if he made a formal motion or not, that's all I'm asking.
No, Kurt did not make a formal motion.
Okay, so I have a motion to table, is there a second?
I'll second that, Jim.
A motion made, just the table, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose? Okay, that has been tabled, let's move on. Uh, the next item is, uh, the Consider Bids for the Autumn Drive Reconstruction Project.
Jim, you wanna wait a second till we let the chamber clear if they wanna leave?
Oh, yeah, if you'd like to, I'm sorry, Mike. Does council need to take a five-minute break or are we ready to keep moving? Kinda just pushed it along.
I'll make a motion, take a five-minute recess.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, Beth, let's keep Zoom open, we'll be back at, uh, eight-thirty.
We're back.
All right, so, uh, yeah, let me find my place here. So we're on the, uh, Consider Bids for Autumn Drive Reconstruction, you have Resolution one sixty-four, twenty twenty-three. A resolution awarding the contract for the Autumn Drive Reconstruction Project. Nate, would you?
Yes. It's here, so we did, um, take bids back on November first for the Autumn Drive Reconstruction Project. Um, we had eight, uh, contractors submit a bid for this project, so the turnout was very high, which was nice. Um, the lowest submitted bid was for the, uh, concrete roadway al-alternate plus base bid and that was in the amount of two million, thirty-four thousand, five dollars and seventy cents. Um, considering our initial construction estimate was two-point-eight million dollars, I'd say that is a very nice number to have. Um, it's not like we, we, we estimated way high either. There, uh, I think there was five of the bidders actually were around the two-point-six, two-point-seven range. So, um, Eastern Iowa that submitted this low bid, I, I think they just really wanted this project and they're, they're ready to get to work on it. So unless council has questions, uh, MSA would recommend awarding this project, uh, the base bid including alternate A, which is the concrete alternate, uh, to Eastern Iowa Exciting.
Um, Nate also add about the contractor wanting to start work immediately?
Yes, um, Eastern Iowa is anxious to get right on this project and start with the sanitary phase of this project, uh, which is in the backyards there off of Autumn Drive. Um, so we are also going to ask if, if possible to award the project and also award with the approval of contracts and bonds based on receipt and review by city staff. That would allow us to, potentially allow them to, to begin work prior to the next council meeting.
Which end are they gonna start on sewer?
They will more than likely start on the low end. So it would be down behind, um, kinda if you know where Marv Stoppel is at, down towards that end of Summer Drive in the backyards and then they would work back towards Autumn Drive.
He the guy with the big backyard with the, all the plantings and stuff back there?
Yes, yeah, and he's already moved things out of the way for us as well, but within the easement area.
So how long till you, till the lady would fence?
It just depends on how easy things go for the contractor. It, there's gonna be some tough spots for them. There's quite a few utilities that need to move if they haven't moved already. Um, Al- Alliance Energy in particular is going to be something they're gonna have to work around and, and it could be slow-going initially.
So is this gonna change completion dates or whatever if we let them start here and then winter's coming?
No, the, the intent behind this project was always to allow a contractor to start the sewer phase this fall and go through the winter if they wanted to. And then we weren't, we're not going to allow any work to begin on Autumn Drive into the spring. So this was just to allow contractors some flexibility in the schedule, so this won't adjust any dates.
Here's a question for me, uh, answer this. If they start on this, is there gonna be a period of time that they say, okay, uh, ground is too frozen, uh, snow keeps falling, blah, 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 whatever the reason, and it just sits dormant as is? So are, are we looking at that and is there any downside to that? I mean, I know I've dug holes and put foundations in and stuff in the winter and you don't backfill until spring.
Yeah, uh, assuming weather cooperates, I'm sure they're gonna try to get this done, um, before winter gets too bad. But there is potential that they would need to stop, um, partway through the sewer replacement. And if, if they need to do that, I'm, they will just backfill the trench and make sure that their, the system's connected and operating, you know, at a hundred percent, so everything would be fine.
Yeah, you're still gonna keep the old sewer line running until the new one's done, right? So they'll just put it in in sections and then backfill over and keep going up to, all the way uphill, right?
Yeah, there'll be some different transfers over, but the idea is that basically you let the sewer run and bypass pump where needed in, in between sections. So they'll, they'll make sure they ended a manhole so then there's no issues.
Would that change the completion date? Would that change the completion date?
No, completion date is going to stay the same. So whatever, if they don't finish, um, the sewer here. Uh, before spring, say, then they'll just have to finish that sometime before the end of the project in the fall of next year. Um, and it, and it is kind of nice that, um, it's work that could be done by a separate crew if they have a different crew working on the street portion of the project.
Have a good working relationship with them. So I think it's a win-win.
Yeah, they've been good to work with on the past couple of projects in Asbury that they've found.
Nate, one of the things that, that concerns me is, is just the difference in the bid versus the, the estimate. I, the one thing about city government that makes me crazy is we got to put, we got to put together an estimate before we get a bid. And I don't know how many of the vendors look at the estimate to say, oh, well. I'm going to bid out close to the two-point-eight million that you, that you budgeted. So I know you budget with a little cushion, but. It, maybe we need to be a little closer on our estimates.
Yeah, I, I'd say what happened this time is, and you can look at, um, some recent DOT. Projects that had bid out that there was an extreme disproportionate number between what the engineer's estimate was on DOT projects from the last bidding window to what the award number was. I think right now there just isn't much out there for contractors. So getting, getting eight bids on a street project like this, I mean, we had fourteen or fifteen. Prime contractors, whole plans to begin with. Now, many of them were from quite a ways away and they ended up not submitting a bid, but. Um, you know, if you look at the bids all across the board, there was, you know, this, this one was extremely low. Um, the next one was about two-point-three million and they kind of went up from there. So.
When I think a thing that contributes to that is the fact that even like the county is cutting back on projects because they don't know if they have enough funding based on how the property tax. So I can understand that.
I think the contractors right now, the market, it's basically what I'm saying is you guys bid this project at the perfect. Is, is what it amounted to, I believe.
I guess the flip side is if they estimate low and then the bids come in over and then we have to kill the project or we have to eat. Assessments because they estimated too low. I mean, it's, it's a double-edged sword. It's pretty hard and engineers, they do their best, but.
I'll make a motion to approve the recommended bid from. Eastern Iowa Excavating for two million thirty-four thousand, five dollars and seventy cents.
I'll second.
A motion to second on resolution one sixty-four. Any other discussion?
Can that be with approval of the. With, with approval of the contracts and bonds upon receipt and review by city staff, what Nate said.
Okay, is there a second on the modified motion?
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Call roll, please.
Aye.
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 Rice.
Aye.
Del Meyer.
Aye.
Okay, that is approved. Next item is resolution one sixty-five, twenty twenty-three. A resolution provides for the notice of hearing on proposed plans, specifications, form of contract. And estimate of cost for, for the Forest Hills Detention Project.
Yeah, this is just to set the date for public hearing on the planned specifications and estimate of cost for the Forest Hills Wetland Project. Um, this project's kind of been a long, long time coming, but, uh. We're finally going to have a bid here before the end of the year and construction is planned for the spring.
What is the projected cost?
Um, when I looked at the numbers today, the estimate on the base bid was right around one-hundred-and-eighty to one-hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars. There are two alternates for some stormwater improvements for this project and both of those combined would add about another seven thousand in estimated cost.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution one sixty-five of twenty twenty-three, providing notice of hearing. Second.
Okay, I have a motion second. Any discussion on resolution one sixty-five? Call roll, please.
Geesling.
Aye.
Link Hammer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rice.
Aye.
Del Meyer.
Aye.
Thank you. That is approved. Next item is ordinance six, twenty twenty-three, an ordinance amending chapter one fifty-six point one-four mechanical code. Of the Code of Ordinances, City of Asbury.
Um, mechanical code, um, and also the following, um, ordinance, the plumbing code. Um, both of these are being amended to follow in line with what the state of Iowa requires for. Uh, mechanical codes and for the plumbing, plumbing code. And also there are, um, some slight adjustments. Adjustments to the fee schedule for the permits.
Do we have any comparisons with other cities?
We tried to stay in line with the city of Dubuque. I think really what we did was we doubled a five-dollar permit fee to ten and we doubled. Uh, another fee from ten to twenty dollars. Otherwise the valuation stuff still remained the same. Um, the other thing was we have ECI do our inspections. So. The fees that had to do with inspectors were adjusted to coincide with what we're paying to that contract.
You were in line with City of Dubuque, City of Piazza. Okay, thank you.
Make a motion to accept ordinance six of twenty twenty-three, an ordinance amending chapter one fifty-six point one-four mechanical code. Of the Code of Ordinances for the City of.
A motion second. Any other discussion?
Beth, do we?
Call, please. Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Sorry, I just was going to ask when the, when the ordinance goes into effect. Is that immediately or, or would it be? No, after, after we pass it, when does it go into effect? Immediately or does it get the first of the year or?
Okay, I can't quite hear that. I think you got your answer. So the third res- third reading is, is read, goes into effect, right?
I think it's January first, twenty twenty-four for both of the ordinances. So if we have the first reading tonight, second reading would be the second meeting in October. Third reading would be the first meeting in December and then we don't have a second meeting in December. So.
I, I wasn't asking about additional. I'm, I'm fine with that. I just didn't know when we approve it, if it goes into effect immediately or the first of the year. So you've answered my question, first of the year.
Okay. Any, any further discussion on ordinance six, first reading?
Motion. Thing in a second. A second by Miller.
Oh, aye.
Link Hammer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rice.
Aye.
Del Meyer.
Aye.
Okay, that is approved. Is there a motion to waive statutory rule requiring said ordinance to be considered and voted on?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second. Call roll, please.
Geesling.
Aye.
Link Hammer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rice.
Nate.
Del Meyer.
Aye.
That is approved for one. The motion to finally pass and adopt ordinance six of twenty twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
Any final discussion? Who made the, who, who made the motion?
Craig Miller.
Craig, I still can't hear you. Please stay, uh, closer to the microphone. Um, call roll, please.
Geesling.
Aye.
Link Hammer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rice.
Aye.
Del Meyer.
Aye.
That is approved and passed. Next is ordinance seven of twenty twenty-three, an ordinance amending chapter one fifty-six point one-five. Plumbing code of the Code of Ordinances, City of Asbury.
The same as the mechanical code to become in line with the state of Iowa code and would also be effective January first.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance seven of twenty twenty-three, an ordinance amending chapter one fifty-six point fifteen of plumbing code of, code of ordinance, City of Asbury.
Second.
Any discussion? Call roll, please.
Geesling.
Aye.
Link Hammer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rice.
Aye.
Del.
Aye.
That is approved. Do I have a motion to waive the statutory ruling? Providing said ordinance to be considered and voted on for passage at three council meetings. Enter the meeting, which is finally be passed, be suspended.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion second, discussion? Call roll.
Geesling.
Aye.
Link Hammer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rice.
Nate.
Del Meyer.
Aye.
That is approved. Do I have a motion to finally pass and adopt ordinance seven of twenty twenty-three?
So move.
Second.
Any final comments? Call roll, please.
Geesling.
Aye.
Link.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
That is approved. Next, we have ordinance eight of twenty twenty-three, an order submitting chapter one fifty-six point one-one. Swimming pools, section three, permit fees of the Code of Ordinances, City of Asbury.
Um, this permit fee section is being, uh, amended to have the permit fees for swimming pools. Um, mirror that of the building, um, building, building permit fees. So they're both on the same schedule. For effective January one.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance eight dash two zero two three.
Second.
Uh, did I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Rice.
Thank you. Any other discussion on, um, ordinance eight? Call roll, please.
Geesling.
Aye.
Link Hammer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rice.
Aye.
Del Meyer.
Aye.
Do I have a motion to waive this statutory rule?
I'll move.
Second.
Motion second. Comments? Call roll.
Geesling.
Aye.
Link Hammer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rice.
Nate.
Del Meyer.
Aye.
That approved. Uh, finals, a motion finally passed and adopt ordinance date of twenty twenty-three.
So move.
Second.
Motion second. Call roll, please.
Geesling.
Aye.
Link Hammer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rice.
Aye.
Del Meyer.
Aye.
That's approved five-zero. The motion entered the closed session per section twenty-one point five, one J of the Code of Iowa.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. All right, let me know when the chamber is clear.